Good evening. We call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council today, Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. Beginning our agenda is council comments. Are there any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind everyone as we get into the holiday season, of course, this Saturday is Small Business Saturday, and just encourage people to, when you shop for the holidays, to help support our local small businesses and merchants, particularly those downtown. As you can imagine, the last 18 months or so have been extremely difficult for our small businesses, so anything we can do to help support them, especially during this holiday season, would be greatly appreciated.
And two quick updates between now and our next meeting. We'll have a few events in downtown Bristol. A week from yesterday, Monday, this upcoming Monday, the 29th, will be the, our community Christmas tree lighting in downtown Bristol, right outside of WCYB in the Bristol Hotel. A week from Thursday, a week after Thanksgiving, Thursday, December 2nd, in downtown is our Christmas parade down Stage Street. So I think a lot of people are excited about that. All of that was postponed last year because of COVID-19, so we're excited to have those events again in downtown Bristol. City manager comments?
No comments.
Okay. Next is matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. And if I'm not mistaking, everyone sign up for an agenda item. Yes, I believe so. So we'll jump right into the adoption of the agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Naif.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes. Item one of our regular agenda, joint meeting with the Bristol, Virginia School Board. I'll go ahead and ask the school board to open their meeting.
November 23rd, Bristol, Virginia School Board meeting to order. Let the record show that all five members are present.
Thank you. And the first part of this is public comment. The only one who signed up for public comment for this item is Michael Pollard.
Thank you, members of the council and mayor. In my opinion, unfortunately, I'm having to speak before the rest of the agenda item, so some of my comments may or may not be accurate or appropriate because we have not yet heard the material at hand. The agenda had no content at all concerning the agenda item, other than the heading. In my opinion, the new school needs to be in closer proximity to those with less access to personal transportation and located in a more central area to those served. It also seems that revisions discussed during the last school process do not seem to have been implemented in the designs that have been presented tonight, such as access from the middle of the U to the courtyard. So I have both conceptual issues as well as specific issues that even if the current school design is moved forward, there, I would suggest a few tweaks that do not seem to have been implemented in the current designs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. The next staff comment, we have Dr. Perrigen here with us this evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Eads, Ms. Bradlin, it's my pleasure to share some more information with you about building a new school for the first time in five decades in the city of Bristol, Virginia. But if our chairman and the mayor would allow me to maybe start with some contextual humor, I think we could probably serve us all well as we go into the holiday season. You know, a couple of years ago, I stood at this podium and I actually accused a former member of city council of sending our school board on continuous snipe hunt after snipe hunt after snipe hunt. And if you've never been snipe hunting, you know that you take a garbage bag or a sack and you go out into a field and somebody will run snipes down a hill and you're supposed to open your bag to catch those snipes as they come in. You know, obviously, snipes are imaginary characters and they don't always work. And so going on a snipe hunt is not always the best thing that you can do. However, it turns out that our school board is actually pretty good at going snipe hunting because as we have went on these different paths, as we've searched for the best way to build a new school, we actually came up with not just $1 million, but $2 million in federal dollars that's offset the cost of local taxpayers to build a new elementary school. So even though we begrudgingly went on what we termed a snipe hunt, it actually ended up in the end to be better for us because we are going to have some federal assistance should city council approve this plan. So thank you for putting up with me to share that little bit of information. That being said, this is an update. A lot of this information that you'll see tonight is, has been presented before, but as you make a final decision on this, I think it's important to be part of the record, but there's also some new information to share tonight as well. Just so that you know how this process has gone so far, in 2018, our school board originally approved the comprehensive agreement to build a new school. That comprehensive agreement was not approved by this city council until 2019, and that was in December of 2019. In the, in February of 2020, because of some variables that were not considered before, some potential land was going to become available. There was maybe an angel investor who was interested in investing in the city of Bristol. Our board actually voted to put the project on hold for a short period of time to make sure that we could actually do this in the very best way that we could for our city and our residents. However, as you know, right after February of 2020, we, COVID-19 happened, and from that point forward, you know, we've, everybody's focus has been on something different than what we normally do. However, because of COVID, which actually ended up in this situation to be a good thing, our board actually reactivated the comprehensive agreement in August of 2021 because of the possibility to use federal dollars, COVID dollars, CARES Act, SIR dollars, to be used as a down payment for the school. And so we reactivated the comprehensive agreement on August 9th of 2021. So going back to when this process originally started, let me just share some information with you. You're probably familiar with a lot of this information, but in 2017 and 18, when our board approved the comprehensive agreement, the school operations appropriation at that time was $6.9 million. When you included debt service, which was at $248,000 annually for the renovations that had been done to Virginia Middle School about 30 years prior, that actual appropriation went to $7.2 million. At that time, the cash balance at the end of that fiscal year for the city was $14.2 million. And the next set of data that I'll share with you, this is data that the state uses to compute the local composite index, which is how the state determines how public education is funded. Property values were valued at that time at $1.1 billion. The adjusted gross income of residents of the city of Bristol, Virginia was estimated at $246 million, and sales tax revenue during that time period were $333 million. Obviously, in the news that things were not really going our way financially, and Bristol was actually recognized as one of four localities in the Commonwealth of Virginia to be fiscally distressed. But you fast forward a year and you look at our school operations appropriation, it went down by $300,000 to $6.6 million. City council did approve a capital appropriation that year of $100,000. However, no school debt service was funded separately by the city. We do have some debt service on the books, but we fund that out of our normal appropriation and not through a separate appropriation, and that debt service is for our school board office. The city's cash balance went up significantly to $9.9 million. Property values were reassessed, which they are done once every biennium, and that's for state budget purposes, and they were, property values were at $1.1 billion. The adjusted gross income of residents in the city of Bristol, Virginia was $251 million, and sales tax revenues at the beginning of that biennium were $335 million. Not only financially were we making state and local news, but we were actually making national news because of the issues and challenges that we had, and you'll remember this Washington Post issue that talked about those issues. Move forward a year, and the school operations appropriation was at $6.7 million, up from the previous year just slightly, and there was a small capital appropriation of $14,000. Again, that year, there was no debt service funded separately by the city for schools. The cash balance remained relatively the same at $19.2 million. I won't go through the property values, income, and sales tax because that was set in the first year of the biennium and that remains constant in the second year. However, in the news, Bristol had started to take a turn in the right direction. That year, 2019 and '20, Moody's actually upgraded Bristol, Virginia's credit rating. So things are starting to trend in the right direction. Moving forward to the next year, the school operations appropriation went down again to $6.5 million. There was no school debt service or capital projects funded separately by the city at all in that fiscal year. The cash balance at the city at that year-end was $23 million, and the LCI components were reassessed for the beginning of the biennium, and property values were assessed at $1.3 billion. Adjusted gross income for residents of the city were $254 million, and sales tax revenues at that time were $357 million. And Bristol continued to get some good news financially as Standards and Poor also upgraded the city of Bristol, Virginia's credit rating. Going into this current school year, 2021, 2022, our city appropriation returned to the level it was a couple of years ago, but not where we were five years ago at $6.7 million. Again, there is no school debt service or capital funded separately by the city. Obviously, the cash balance at the end of this year is not known at this point, and the, the local composite index factors were set in the first year of the biennium, so they didn't change. But again, the city of Bristol, Virginia continued to get good financial news because of the good work done by Mr. Eads, Ms. Bradlin, city council, and all members of city staff to make sure that, that our city was on the right trajectory. So when you take that and you look at the summation of all the financial changes since 2017 and 18, the city's year-ending operating cash balance has increased by $9.4 million to the most recent total being $23.6 million. The city went from being one of the most financially distressed localities in the Commonwealth of Virginia to earning an A3 rating from Moody's and an A-plus rating from Standards and Poor. Current property values, we just received our new local composite index information from the Commonwealth. Local property values, and this is, this is not the new assessment, so don't think this is the new assessment. This data, they calculate the LCI based on two-year-old data, so this data is actually two years old. Property values are $1.4 billion. That's up $23 million from 2017 and 18. Current adjusted gross income of residents in our city is now estimated at $261 million, which is up $15 million from 2017, 18. And sales tax revenues are estimated at $386 million, which is up a staggering $52 million since 2017 and 18. So as you can see, when we first started having conversations with city council about building a new school, the financial position of our council has went up and up and up and up, which is exactly the intent that this council has had and this city staff has had as well. The one thing that has not continued to go up and up and up is the school, the way we fund our schools. Our annual school appropriation has decreased since 2017 by $447,000. So if you take the city's recent capital philosophy and you apply it to that information that I just shared about the financial status of the city, this is a quote that finances are the big reason. This is in, talking about the jail. In the spring of 2018 and 19, that's one of the times that we were talking about a new school, when the city looked at this, talking about the jail, the financial condition of the city is not as secure as it is now. We are in a position now where we can make this transition and it not be a burden on other departments throughout the city. And as you know, public education is another department throughout the city, as is fire and police and many other things. So again, you've, you've seen this slide before, but just as a reminder, when you look at the schools that are, that we currently have open in the city of Bristol, Virginia, Highland View was built during FDR's administration, Works Progress administration, and built in 1937. Stonewall Jackson was built under the Truman administration, which was 1948, and Washington Lee Elementary School was built in 1968 when LBJ was president. So that, that's not new information. However, this is new information that we've just received. I received this information as part of information I've been given where I serve on the Commission of School Construction and Modernization at the state level. We have a meeting coming up in December to talk about ways that we can address this school infrastructure issue across the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. There's, and the information that was provided to us just a couple of weeks ago, out of 132 school divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia, the median age of Bristol's school buildings, there's only one division has older schools than we do, and that's actually just by one year. So you look at 132 school divisions and you look at the median age of their schools, ours, Bristol schools, are the second oldest. To go on with that, if you take the median out of it and just look at average age of the school buildings, Bristol ranks fourth. Now, we don't want to rank fourth. Obviously, we want to rank 132nd. We want to have the newest and best schools that we can possibly have. But out of 132 school divisions, Bristol schools are the fourth oldest with an average age of 72 years. And then if you look at it a different way, you look at the, how long it's been since a school division has built a new school. It's been 47 years since we built a new school in the city of Bristol, Virginia. There's only 10 other school divisions that have waited as long as, longer than we have to build a new school, so we do rank 11th. Now, when I say second and fourth and 11th, those sounds like really good rankings, but it's kind of like golf, that you don't want to, that's not where you want to be. You want to be, you want to have a higher ranking than that, obviously. And I know that that's not something that any of us are proud of, but it is something that we're tasked with. We have an opportunity to address this issue, not only for our city, but for our students and for future students that will attend Bristol, Virginia Public Schools. So, you know, just being old is not a reason to build a new school. There's a lot of other reasons that go into it, and I'm not going to read this list. You've seen this slide before, too. But I will point out a few of the things that are, I think, are really important to understand. The schools that we're talking about replacing are full of asbestos, they have moisture infiltration, they have radon, air quality issues, and mostly, and maybe most importantly, they're handicap inaccessible. Two of those schools are completely handicap inaccessible. In the year 2021, it's almost to be 2022, we have two schools that are fully handicap inaccessible. We have, Stonewall Jackson is partially handicap accessible, but not fully. And again, I won't go through the rest of those. You've seen this slide before. But maybe even more important than the problems and issues that we have as a result of these old schools are what we, the reason that we could build a new school and how it would help our city. You know, we know that having a good teacher in every classroom, research tells us that that is the best way to affect student achievement. No question. So our number one focus is to hire the very best teachers that we can. But a very close second, when you look at the research, school facility also plays a very important part in student outcomes. And so we can help our students achieve more and better by providing the best 21st century learning opportunities that we can. We also know, any real estate agent will tell you, Mr. Farnum, that one of the things that folks look at as they're buying a new house is, what do the schools look like in the district that I'm going to be living in? We only have to walk across the state line and the county line to see what new 21st century state-of-the-art schools look like. And as we, as Bristol starts to grow and we're on an upward trend, more people are going to move to this area, especially when the casino opens. And they're going to look at our, our schools, not only our performance, but at the condition of our schools. And you can look at two relatively new schools in Bristol, Tennessee. You can look at a brand-new school in Sullivan County, a new high school in Sullivan County, and you stack our schools up against those and there's no comparison. Schools also attract new businesses. As businesses are looking for a place to come to bring jobs to our community, they want to know about the schools, too. As a matter of fact, I've given tours to folks who are wanting to attract new businesses, not only in my position here at Bristol, but in my position in Norton and my position as administrator in Washington County. Folks who are bringing jobs to an area want to know what type of schools are going to serve the children who, their employees, serve the children of their employees. And then finally, I would say that our current schools are not suited for existing technology, much less emerging technology. Part of our focus with the COVID funds that we have received is we have hired two folks to focus on emerging technology, and we're trying to make sure that our students have access to the latest, greatest, and whatever's coming down the pipe, the newest technologies, so that when they graduate from our schools, they're ready to use those technologies in the workplace. One of the biggest barriers that we've had to do in that is our schools are not equipped to handle that technology. A new school would certainly assist with that as well. So how did we get here? Just for those of you who don't know, in 1997, the Virginia Department of Education toured schools across the Commonwealth. They came to Bristol. They looked at Highland View Elementary and Washington Lee Elementary in 1997 and advised that those schools be phased out of service. I don't know what happened between 97 and 2011, but in 2011, our school board started having conversations in earnest about building a new elementary school. They actually hired an independent consultant to come in and do a facility study. One of the main things that came out of that facility study is that independent consultant found that Highland View was functionally obsolete. We had already known in 1997 that the Virginia Department of Education recommended that it be closed or phased out, and in 2011, we got additional information that that school was actually functionally obsolete. In 2018, this is, after I got here, Virginia Department of Education sent their staff down again. They were actually surprised that Highland View and Washington Lee were still open, and they reaffirmed the 1997 findings that Highland View and Washington Lee should no longer be used. So it's not just the superintendent of schools in Bristol suggesting that this should happen. It's not just our school board suggesting that this should happen. Experts over decades have told us that we need to start having a plan to address our aging schools. So if you apply that to the city's recent capital philosophy about the age of our buildings and the condition of our buildings, the second reason is that we have a facility that is 50 years old. Keep in mind, we have buildings that are 83 years old, 73 years old, and beyond its useful life, and it needs significant capital upgrades. When you're putting money into capital projects, at some point, it becomes good money going into bad after you've, after you, when you have a 50-year-old facility. And again, our newest school in the city of Bristol, Virginia, is 47 years old. Keep in mind that we're talking about a facility that houses 67 inmates, and those are certainly, those inmates are certainly important, and we need to do the very best that we can by them. But what we're talking about is meeting the needs of 2,200 of Bristol, Virginia's children. And currently, we're sending over half of our elementary children to schools that were built decades and decades ago. So how do we make this happen? I think everybody has seen the design of what a new 21st century elementary school could look like. This is a rendering of what that school would look like. I also have in front of you, you've got a road design over here to my right, and you've got a classroom design over here to my left. You can take a look at that, and here's a rendering of what the school would look like after it is completely built. But you know, to make it happen, you have to be able to pay for it. The payment, and we're doing this on $24 million, and this includes all financing costs. Keep in mind, that is a significant increase from the estimate that you saw in 2018. There has been a $4 million increase in cost of construction because we've waited to put this off. Thankfully, at the same point in time, as I mentioned, the city's financial standing has went up, which means their credit rating has went up, which means the interest rate has went down, as have interest rates all across our nation. And because of that, it actually offsets, for the most part, the increase in construction costs. And as of September 29th, the financier who's working on this project estimates that the annual payment will be $1.3 million. A $2 million impact, the money that we are receiving from SIR III, we've got approval from the Virginia Department of Education to make a down payment on this new school with that. That will reduce the annual payment by $110,000. City council also has ARPA funds, which I understand that you're, you're waiting to see what happens at the landfill before you spend any of that money. However, if you don't have to spend the entire $10 million on the landfill or on other needs that the city has, keep in mind that no payment, the first payment that will be made on this new school is when we take possession. So if we approve this process in December, we would anticipate that the school opens in August of '23, so there is no payment that needs to be made then. So if the city decides between now and August of '23 that they want to use a portion of their ARPA funds to get that payment down, you'll have the opportunity to do that as well. Keep in mind that we originally got an estimate on September 20th based on the interest rates at that time, and we, we thought we were going to meet sooner than this, so we got another estimate on September 29th. In that, in those nine days, the interest rate went up 22 basis points, which had an impact of $30,000 annually on our payment. Now, we know that interest rates are at a historical low, and there's no other direction for them to go besides up, other than, you know, small adjustments that the, the market will make. As a matter of fact, we requested a new rate this past week, and it is only, the newest rate has decreased by three basis points. So you're looking at an increase of, from the original estimate of 19 total basis points. But we, we know that you might have some small declines, but there's no room for those interest rates to go very much lower than they already are. So we can actually, because of a new law that was passed just a couple of years ago, we can actually use a portion of our lottery proceeds that we received from the state for school infrastructure to the tune of about $350,000. I mentioned earlier that the Commission on School Construction and Modernization is going to be making recommendations to the legislature about funding school construction like they did back in 2009 before the Great Recession. I was at an event today with Governor Young, Governor-elect Youngkin, where he said that school infrastructure is going to be one of the top priorities of his administration, too. So I think that we can anticipate some additional assistance from the state as we go into the next general session. We can't, that's not money in the bank, obviously, but I think it is, it provides hope as we're making these decisions. The last time I presented this slide, there was actually $80 billion in the federal infrastructure bill to go towards school construction, but as those negotiations progressed, that money was whittled out. And so other than the ability to use historical tax credits for school construction, there's no, there's no hope of federal support in the very near future for school infrastructure. So when you look at savings comparisons, we've talked about a couple of different models. One of those models is closing Stonewall Jackson, Highland View, and Washington Lee. I'm not going to read all the positions that we saved through that full consolidation, but our estimates, which has also been reviewed by professional analytic staff, estimate that that savings will be $1.2 million. If you keep Stonewall Jackson open, which has been a recent discussion with the desire of some folks to keep, you know, either a school in the center of the city or on both the east and west end of the city, unfortunately, we don't generate nearly as much savings there. There are some savings generation, but it's about, generated, but it's about $900,000 So the, if you look at the scenario of keeping Stonewall Jackson open and you apply that to it, again, the annual estimated payment is $1.3 million. You apply the savings to that, that gets the payment down to a million. You apply the SIR funds that we have approved, which is $2 million. The state, in their special session in August, also awarded us an additional $440,000 in reimbursement for any HVAC projects that we have done, and so we're going to, we're recommending that we take that $440,000 and also apply it to a down payment. That would get the payment down to $870,000. And then you take $350,000 of state lottery funds, and that gets that payment down to 520. So we estimate that at least 500, or at maximum, $520,000 additional funds would be needed to close all of our schools but Stonewall Jackson. Keep in mind that if the city, two years from now, 18 months from now, decided they wanted to use $2 million of their available ARPA funds, that would bring that payment down another $110,000, which you'd get at as low as $410,000. Any of the remaining would have to be covered by new state or federal dollars or an additional appropriation. appropriation from the city, which, based on what we have currently available to us, it would have to be an additional appropriation from the city. Obviously, we could reduce the size of the building to get those costs down as well. So an estimated deficit, if we keep Stonewall Jackson open, is somewhere between $410,000 to $520,000. Again, that, that difference is dictated by city council's desire to use any of their ARPA funds towards that process. However, if we close Stonewall Jackson, we, again, we start with that payment of $1.3 million. We generate savings of $1.2 million, which then that gets the deficit to just $90,000. When you take that ESER and HVAC funding of $2.4 million, it actually makes this project, based on just the budget, a budget positive project, because you're to the good of $44,000. And so at that point, you don't, we don't have to apply any of our lottery funds. It would not be required. The city wouldn't, wouldn't need to use any of their ARPA funds for the project. However, if they did, it would make the project even further budget positive. And as you can see, we marked out the line that you would need any additional state, federal, or local appropriation, or you wouldn't have to reduce the size of the building. So the estimate of deficit, if we close all three of our oldest elementary schools, is actually zero. So talking about budget neutral, you remember one of the very first snipe hunts that I, that I went on was, you know, we could only consider building a new school if it was budget neutral. And we found a way to, to make that happen back in 2018. However, the original task was to build, and our budget at that time was $7.2 billion. In 2018, the city was giving us almost 50% more than they were required to do by state law. There's something called Required Local Effort, Required Local Match, and that's all looks at the local composite index formula. I know it's a bunch of mumbo jumbo, but that's, that's how education funding is calculated in the Commonwealth of Virginia. You were giving us in 2018 50% more than you needed to. And 2018, you were required to give us at least $4.7 million. And if you will remember, you were giving us like $6.9 million, so about 50% more than you have to. Fast forward to 2022, our LCI really has not increased that much, but the way the state has put the burden on localities to fund public education, your Required Local Effort and Required Local Match has went up significantly. In our current year, based on our enrollment projections, actually, our enrollment is higher than it was projected. We're one of the few divisions in the Commonwealth that is seeing either a level enrollment or growth in enrollment. I think that's a lot of the reason is because our school board decided to open schools last August 20th. That's just my opinion. But anyway, in 2022, based on the projected enrollment, the city's minimum contribution is $6.3 million. So now, because of that change, we don't, we can't just look at whether this is budget neutral or budget positive. We also have to look at how this impacts Required Local Effort and Required Local Match. Because debt service and capital, any capital expenditure does not count towards your effort, that has to be pulled out of the, out of the formula. So keep in mind, we've made these estimates at city staff's request. It's the best estimate we can provide because composite indexes go up and down, enrollments go up and down, state funding formulas change with the wind, sometimes it seems like. So this is our best estimate of what the local appropriation would look like over the next five years in three different scenarios. First of all, we can do nothing. We can leave our existing schools just the way they are. Keep Stonewall, Highland View, Washington Lee, and Van Pelt open. If we do that, we will leave almost $15 million on our capital improvement plan. You, based on Required Local Effort and Match, the city will be giving us $300,000 more than they're required to give by the minimum of state law. So over the last five years, though, we have spent, on average, over the last five years, $741,000 on capital projects. So if we were to say in that average, over the next five years, for the next five years, the city would have to give us about $410,000 extra dollars every year just to meet the minimum requirement of state law of Required Local Effort and Required Local Match. So if we do nothing, because we've gotten so close to Local Effort and Local Match, the city is going to have to significantly increase our appropriation. Actually, it would, it would still not be as much as we appropriated in 2018. If we keep Stonewall Jackson open, that gets our capital improvement plan list, it knocks $6 million off. By taking Stonewall, I mean, by taking Highland View and Washington Lee offline, we reduce our capital improvement plan by $6 million. It gets it down to $8.3 million. However, because we don't generate the savings by keeping Stonewall Jackson open, we would need an additional $547,000 to make the annual payment on the new school. Out of that, $520,000 would go to the loan. We would have flexibility with about $27,000 of that that we could spend at our discretion. And then finally, if you close everything except for Van Pelt, that actually reduces our capital improvement plan by $8 million, almost $9 million, gets it down to $6.1 million. We still would have to receive an additional appropriation of $547,000 from the city. However, because we generate savings by closing the other three schools, none of that additional appropriation goes towards debt or goes towards the loan. The remaining $540,000 could be used at our discretion to increase teacher salaries, to provide additional instructional supplies, and the resources that our children need to be successful in a 21st century world. So when we talk about legacy, I was at a, a meeting at the Rotary, maybe a month or so ago, and Mr. Reeves was talking about the state, the state affairs in Bristol, Virginia. And he ended his presentation with this. Bristol has looked backwards for too long. Let's not look backwards. And even though Mr. Reeves and I disagree on a lot of things from time to time, we have, you should be a fly on the wall in some of the conversations that we have. I agree 100% with Mr. Reeves on this comment. It is time for our city leaders, our city council, and our school board, our superintendent, to quit kicking the can down the road. We have some of the oldest schools in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we can't keep looking back at those schools. We've got to start looking to the future. We also think about legacy, and, and our mayor said recently that, ask this question. I hope it was rhetorical. I hope he wasn't really looking for an answer. I think I know what my answer would be. But do we want to be in the business of building jails or building schools? And to me, the answer to that question is easy. All elected bodies leave their mark when they lead. You have been left with some very tough, tough and difficult situations to deal with. Many of those that are not in the purview of what an elected body should have to deal with. However, building schools and taking care of public education and taking care of children, that is one of the main responsibilities of our school board and of our city council. And you have an opportunity to leave a legacy with a new elementary school that provides for our students the same accommodations that students in Fairfax have, that students in Loudon have, that students in affluent communities all over our Commonwealth have. You are, in December, when we get our final numbers and bring those back to you, this council is going to have an opportunity to leave that legacy. So that councils after you down the road is not going to be having to come behind you and clean up a mess. And I commend you for the good and hard work that you're doing on the many, the many things that you've been working on. But it's also my duty as superintendent not to let you forget how important our children are, how important public education is, not only for our children, but for the betterment of our community, to recruit new folks to our area, to recruit new businesses to our area. So I'll leave you with this question. We're going to leave a legacy. I will, Mr. Reeves will, you will, our school board will. We have a choice in what legacy we'll leave. And hopefully, that will be our legacy, that we've left our, our city in a better place for children of our future, and that Bristol, Virginia Public Schools truly has the opportunity to prepare all of our students to thrive. So with that, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to answer any questions or get out of the way so that the council and board can have discussion.
Well, thank you, Dr. Perigin. And we do have probably a few questions up here, and I invite the school board to, to jump in anytime. I know you guys are down there, you can use any of the microphones anytime you guys would So what questions do we have, guys?
Thank you for your presentation, first off. And I know it changes a little bit every time we see it, but I think I could do your presentation for you at this point. One question I do have, I know you had mentioned in relation to keeping Stonewall Jackson open and reducing the size of the building to cut down on the cost. I, I, it seems like I recall at some point you had mentioned the cost per classroom if you reduce sizes. What was, what was that number?
Yes, sir. You, and actually, the audience can kind of, this is the back diagram, and you can see the front diagram. You can see that this design is easily expandable or retractable. You can just cut a classroom, or actually, two classrooms makes more sense, off the end of that U-shaped. And for each classroom, you're looking at $150,000. It would make more sense to cut off two, so $300,000. Over the, in the whole scheme of things, there's not much additional cost to adding a couple of classrooms, and there's not much additional savings. You know, $300,000 is a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but when you amortize that over 30 years, the impact that that has on the annual payment is really not much at all.
And what, what is the, the student population that would be held in a school of that size?
So right now, if we were to move all elementary schools, well, that, that school is built for 600 students. Van Pelt obviously remains open and would, would hold, with 600, I think 650 students. And Van Pelt has the capacity to do 450 or 475. So in this current configuration, based on our current enrollment, we would, we would be building this school for capacity. We would be at capacity when we built this new school. My recommendation, if we go in that direction and build, close everything and move both schools to the campus at Van Pelt, would be to add additional classroom spaces so that we, we can't just accommodate the students that we have now, but we're ready to accommodate the growth that we anticipate in our city.
So back on your slide about the remaining capital budget, if we do keep Stonewall open as opposed to closing all of it. So I think you said that, go forward. I think it was 6.1 million, yeah, right there. 6.1 million is remaining if you close everything and have the primary school at Van Pelt. Would most of that, 6.1, I'm assuming, go to the, the high school, middle school?
High school, middle school, and existing Van Pelt.
Okay.
Keep in mind, we, and I didn't include this information, our board is currently considering an energy performance contract to do some pretty major renovations at those three schools as well. They have not approved that because we're, we're waiting to determine if we should include Stonewall Jackson in that contract or not. And so once we make that determination, we'll move forward with that. But we will be knocking some of the 14, or the eight, or the six, in any scenario, off after we complete an energy performance contract. Very quickly, an energy performance contract is, you do a lot of measures to save energy. The energy savings ends up making the annual payment for the, for the loan that you would take to do those projects. And it doesn't count towards your debt capacity.
And the, were you to keep Stonewall Jackson open, you would do significant renovations there as well to upgrade it?
We would, our, our first objective would be to get it to safe, functional, and accessible, not the full 21st century renovation. That's kind of out of our price range right now, but we do think that we can get it to hit all the safe, functional, and accessible improvements.
What kind of extension to the life of the school would that provide?
Nobody's been able to tell this. That is certainly a concern, that when you put good money into bad, you may not get the return on investment that you hope.
You touched on it a little bit already, but about the capacity. We have so many square feet, so many classrooms. If we have 1,100 elementary school students now, are we planning properly for five to 10 years down the road with, you know, new businesses and new homes in the city of Bristol? If, if that 1,100's number is then 1,250, it may not seem like a huge increase, but as people move, there, you know, children aren't always spread throughout. Do we have enough room for more here and there? That's something I think to be mindful of.
Right. And so keeping Stonewall Jackson open and building this, this school at the Van Pelt property, yes. Closing Stonewall Jackson and moving every student into this building, we're at capacity. So that's why my recommendation would be to add, you know, $300,000, $600,000 worth of additional classrooms to the end of this, to go ahead and prepare for that growth. Let me provide some context to that question as well. You may have read the article in the Cardinal Press recently about UVA's Weldon Cooper Center, who's, they talked about the difference in annual incomes in Loudon County and in Dickinson County. The same gentleman who provided that data, Hamilton Lombard, also does enrollment analysis for us. And I shared with him, you know, we've got Amazon coming, we've got some potential housing projects coming, we've got the casino that's going to open up soon. Can you provide an estimate for, for us, how that would relate? And he said, really, it would be too hard to do. But what he would guess, without putting, you know, a formal opinion in writing, is that it would stop the decline. It wouldn't cause growth, but it would stop the decline. Now, we've kind of beat that because, you know, last year, we had just a really small decline in enrollment. We were open. And this year, it looks like, it depends on how they, how Richmond counts our children, it looks like we're going to have a slight growth for the first time in, I don't, I don't know, do you remember how long it's been since? But we're going to have a slight growth in enrollment this year for the first time in a long time. I think, even though the experts think that it might just stop decline, I anticipate that we'll see some growth.
I have one other ques, I know I've already done my stuff, but I have one other question. So I know you had mentioned that you had talked to Governor-elect Youngkin. I know that...
No, I didn't talk to him. I listened to him.
You listened to him.
Yeah, I listened to him.
I know that in the last session, there were, there was a proposal by Delegate Ruzul that would have helped, you know, local and rural schools, and there were other members who said, oh, if rural counties just need more schools, why don't they just ask for money from, from their governing body, which isn't realistic in most cases? And I think the, the locality with the oldest schools, is that Tazewell County?
No.
No, is it down here?
No, it's Hampton.
Hampton.
Well, it depends on if you're looking at average or median age.
Yeah. So what do you, what kind of reading do you have that the state would be able to help us the next couple of fiscal years with this change in administration?
So I know our delegation is going to carry legislation, maybe potentially two pieces of legislation to help. One of those that we've asked them to carry is to reinstitute the School Construction Grant Fund, which we received annually about $400,000 the last time that was there in Bristol. And then also to allow some localities, based on certain economic structures, to be able to count debt service or capital improvements as part of the Required Local Effort. I mean, just that alone, if we were able to say, look, Bristol's financially distressed, our buildings are 50 years old, you know, they're not handicap accessible, could we get a waiver and be able to count capital, capital expenditures and local debt service towards Required Local Effort? That would open up huge opportunities for this city without increasing your appropriation. Also, the, the Commission on School Construction and Modernization will be issuing recommendations. And as I said, Governor Youngkin is, is saying, as he's going on his thank you tour now, that school infrastructure is going to be a priority for his administration.
Do you have a rough estimate, school bus riders versus car riders in our elementary schools?
So our current count, it goes up and down, but on average, about 400 stu, elementary students ride the bus every day. And it's almost exactly the same in the afternoons, even though it's sometimes a, a different group of students.
And that leads me to my question about a daily concern, daily occurrence, is drop off and pickup with school buses, the car rider line. Can you talk a little bit about at Van Pelt, how you could alleviate that? I know you and the school board have talked about that before, but also, too, I'm wondering about the city involvement down, I think about Suncrest near Van Pelt, Suncrest and Bonham, you know, is there going to be a stoplight there one day? Or another turn lane? Or do, you know, do, is there a police officer needed every day from 2:30 to 3:30 to help with that intersection?
So that's about four questions. I'm going to try my best to answer them. If I don't hit them all, you, you let me know. I will tell you that moving all elementary school students to two different schools on the same campus at Van Pelt will be logistically challenging. Now, financially, there's no question, that's the absolute best option. Logistically, keeping Stonewall Jackson open is the best option, because you, you're talking about 250 to 300 students that would be using that car rider line. We had already anticipated that before we even started having the conversation about closing Stonewall Jackson. And if you'll just see this design originally, the road, or the service road coming up to Van Pelt actually was all the way past the curve. And so it was actually going to, you know, stop traffic in that downhill curve that you're aware of right there as you, as you pass the park. The new design, which is, this is already included in the cost estimates already, that road has been moved up and extended, and it's, that new road would come in under this proposal very close to the fire hall. And so that, there, there would be, we've counted the number of cars that are in our car rider lines at all schools in the afternoon. There is enough space to stage all of those cars. Will it be a slow process? Absolutely. We are already looking into services that are available to help alleviate and speed up those times, and we've even contacted Chick-fil-A, because you know, they can get people through there in a, in a New York minute. No, I'm serious. I mean, it's, you know, if you want to look for efficiency, look at, look at how Chick- No, I'm serious, I mean, it's, you know, if you want to look for efficiency, look at, look at how Chick-fil-A and Pal's do their drive-through lines, which is very similar to a pickup line, you're picking up a chicken sandwich instead of a child is is the big difference. But yeah, we are considering all those logistical issues that that could cause. And I'll, I'll be the first to tell you, if we close all three elementary schools, there will be logistical challenges that we have to overcome. If we keep Stonewall Jackson open, that will resolve some of those logistical chan, challenges. The most recent traffic count at that intersection, Jay would tell you that we, it does not even come close to meeting the requirements for a traffic light there. Probably would, you know, maybe somebody to help direct traffic, but it does not meet the requirements for adding a traffic light.
I don't have an additional question, you've answered mine about Stonewall Jackson that I had. I just, I just wanted to say, thank you for the thorough presentation. And it certainly is eye-opening to think that there's only one other division that has schools older than ours. And you're right, as Bristol continues to move forward and attract new residents and new businesses, it, and it's also most important for our students that we have these schools and have have schools that are safe and an excellent learning environment. I know as far as, there's been a lot of talk in the community about, you know, the transporting for maybe the students at the Feather Sten, which is Stonewall Jackson, all the way up to Van Pelt. And I know, in in reality, it's not that many miles, you know, it does seem like a long, long way. But I'm just wondering, you gave us two different scenarios here, or three. But in thinking about closing all but Van Pelt or keeping Stonewall open, are you all, and I can see the cost up there, but are you all leaning towards one or the other?
Mr. Chairman, I I will not presume to speak on behalf of the board, because we have not gotten this far. We actually brought the Stonewall Jackson open, because we were asked to look for a more central location by City Council.
Yep.
And and we looked and looked and looked and looked, and you know, we were able to get rid, mark a lot of the things off the list. And the, keeping Stonewall open was the best option that we could find. Our board has not made a decision about that publicly, but I don't know if they want to talk about it as individuals or not.
That's fine.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm going to bore you with a little bit of history real quick. I think Dr. Perrigen has covered all the numbers and and all that stuff, every everyone understands the business side of it. I went to school Thomas Jefferson, first and second grade. And every time I walk in Highland View today, or Stonewall Jackson, it reminds me of Thomas Jefferson. Great school, don't get me wrong, I I met some lifelong friends there. Went downstairs in the basement to the gym, there were puddles in the gym, there were water leaks. We had an asphalt playground, steam heat, radiators, single pane windows. And then they built Washington Lee over fifty years ago. I went there in third grade, it's a brand-new school. And I, I can still smell the paint. I mean, it was such, such an impact on my education, on my learning ability, and everyone else in my class. And I'll never forget that. I mean, we had a new gym, new cafeterias, nice windows, we had air conditioning and heat. We weren't going to the cafeteria in a, in a steam Jenny situation like Thomas Jefferson. But just all that I remember. And I just feel like personally, it was such an impact. And I think it would be such an impact on our students, our elementary kids. And about the Stonewall Jackson versus keeping it open or closed, I've debated that a long time in my mind. And something just hit me not long ago, and it really made me think. If we close Stonewall Jackson, then we have every single elementary student in Bristol, Virginia, goes to a new school. Anybody that moves to Bristol, Virginia, with elementary-age students, they go to a brand-new school. And I just think that's, I I think that's pretty important and powerful. So, that's my feeling. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council. I don't really like the idea of being in one place, but I understand financially, it speaks volumes. And what Steve said about everybody having the same new school, that's a real plus. But let me back up to the COVID year and tell you that we were one of four school divisions in the whole Commonwealth that had in-person instruction. That was a huge benefit to our town and the people that needed someplace for their children to go. And even on Friday, when everybody went online, we still had childcare. And we fed all these children all through the year. But what we did added to the economic vitality of Bristol. And you can't really talk about public education without talking about its economic impact. Huge payrolls and we're creating equity in the most basic sense for all the children in our town. And we have a challenged student population, seventy, sixty, seventy percent on free and reduced lunch. One of the reasons we had them in school in person during the pandemic is they're safer in school than they are at home, in a lot of cases. And that's a sad situation, but it's reality. So, we have a lot of stuff going on in Bristol, Virginia Public Schools. And education isn't bricks and mortar. It's the spirit of our faculty and our administration that has made us one of four out of the Commonwealth to be in session. They're all courageous. And I think, though, that a new bricks and mortar school would help instruction and all the other technological things that we have to have in the twenty-first century. So, you guys have a lot on your plate with the jail and the dump and just managing the finances, which you've done very well in the last few years, and you're to be commended. But I think very seriously about this new school. There's no question we need it, and indeed, it would be a good legacy for all of us. Thank you.
I appreciate you saying that, Mr. Goodpasture. I I know in August of twenty twenty, Dr. Perrigen and I, we had conversations as we were getting ready to start back to school. And I was asking, is this the best, is this the best option that we're going with? And, you know, looking back now, hindsight is twenty twenty, being able to offer in-person learning, that helped Bristolians, you know, their kids could go to school, so we could get back to work. And we did it in a safe way. And and what the teachers did was the biggest impact on me. Essentially, they were working two jobs, teaching in-person and virtual at the same time. So, they had to adjust to something they've never had to do before. So, I appreciate all the work that you all did in that as well.
I'll just ask Mr. Christian to mark that on the tape, I think Mr. Farm just said I was right, but that's, just kidding. Thank you, thank you very much, we're, we're very proud of everything our staff did. But also, for the support that our community provided to make sure we could make that happen.
I've got quite a few questions. I guess, first off, when you talk about the cost, that twenty-four million is is the, that's the guaranteed maximum price?
No, sir, that is the most reasonable estimate that can be provided at this time. The final plans have now been drawn up, or eighty percent plans have now been drawn up. JA Street has them, and they have them out for bid. They will have us the guaranteed maximum price at the December meeting, where, and at that point, the financiers will take that out to bid. And so, we'll have it in early December, and so, we'll, our board will consider that, hopefully, at our December sixth board meeting, and come to you guys shortly thereafter to talk about the guaranteed maximum price and the interest rate, how that will affect the annual payment. This, this is the best estimate we can provide, based on current conditions and what we know.
Well, I know you you made various presentations over time, and and that was one of the things you were trying to get to, is that guaranteed maximum price. I didn't know if that, you you had locked that in yet, or you're-
No, this, in my, you know, I'd said, and when I interviewed with Mr. McGee, the reason we needed to have this meeting is because we are going to have that guaranteed maximum price soon. And we don't need to just spring that on you and have you make a split-second decision after you get that number. We needed to have this meeting so we can get you close, so that you can ask any questions that you need or or give me any additional assignments that you may need before we get that guaranteed maximum price in December.
So, just to, because I'm trying to, again, having dealt with this, this is the third time it's come up, trying to compare apples to apples. So, in the financing, this is thirty, still a thirty-year? Because at one point, you, I remember you saying something, you felt that maybe the term could be shortened.
Right, the the, this estimate is based on a thirty-year note.
Okay. Because I do appreciate the ways that you've come up with lottery and and using the Esra funds in different ways to to, you know, granted, the price has gone up, we know the price, that's why I was wondering the guaranteed maximum price, because things are going to go up. We know they're going up, I mean, inflation, it's it's going to go up, so having that is very helpful. But also, knowing, you know, the way you've been able to kind of bring this back, it's close to budget neutral, depending on which which option, I appreciate that work. You know, so, I guess, in looking at this, one thing there, well, you got that slide up, I was thinking about it a minute ago. So, the keep Stonewall open, that eight million, you had previously talked about using the Esra funds to do renovations at Stonewall. Is that included in that?
Partially, but not completely. So, part of using the Esra funds for Stonewall, we've already done that at several, at all of our schools, actually, by improving ventilation, which is a huge part of being able to open a school during COVID. However, as I mentioned earlier, we are considering an energy performance contract that would allow, enable us to do additional renovations at Stonewall if we keep it open. But if not, at the other, the other three schools that we, or that, yeah, the other three schools that we haven't done work to. So, the answer is that, yes, and maybe, and partially.
Okay, because, well, I know that you said that basically, it would require about half a million dollars, I think.
Yeah, we, we have identified half a million dollars that we cannot cover through the energy performance contract or using Esra funds. To get to safe, functional, and accessible.
Yeah, that's, again, I was thinking back to what you'd said before.
Good memory.
So, so, I mean, I guess the, from a, you know, funding perspective, either way, we're looking at roughly half a million dollars of additional appropriation, which, as you point out, puts us, puts you back roughly to where you were four years ago.
Two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, so, about that. You know, I guess the question then is, and it's probably for the school board more than us, but but when you come to us with this plan, will you know if you're going to build a school and have two schools or have three schools? Because, and and I'll just bring this up, because, you know, at first, you're right, would you, the task was, if you can come up with a way to do this that's budget neutral, then, and and you did. And the only way you could do that was to build one school at Van Pelt. I think everybody, and we had, I don't know how many call meetings, and and when you got around and got away from the fact of of money and what you wanted, it was pretty clear people would prefer a two- or three-school option. When we voted on this the last time, the public, you know, the two main complaints were, wait until the casino comes, so they would feel better about the the financial ability of the city to provide this. And that's since passed in a referendum. And again, having a two- or three-school option, particularly the folks on the west end, not wanting to to go all the way across town and the logistics of that, as well as if possible. And we talked about that before, and that's where the, you know, I guess, in my mind, I thought that's the direction everybody was leaning, because that's what we had talked about. Even looking at the third school in the center of the city and realize there is no feasible way to use existing funds, either the Esra funds or funds the city has, to, because there's no real property that's currently available that would meet the needs. So, if we're going to do something in in this timeframe, that would not be an option. And I know you looked at quite a few options, I mean, you didn't just look at one, or, I mean, you you kicked every rock and tried to find every option. So, you know, I guess that that would be, my question is, when this comes back, I mean, the money's going to be the same, it looks, from what your presentation sounds like, but functionally, it's going to work different. So, will that, I mean, will the school board make that determination before you bring it back to us?
I I don't know what our school board's intention are. Let me answer a couple of other questions that you kind of brought in there first. One good point that you made is about the casino, that was one of the things, let's wait until we get the casino. Keep in mind that the first payment for the new school, if it's approved in December, the first payment will be made in August of twenty twenty-three, which will be very close to the time that casino revenues are starting to come in. The other thing, when you talked about the other side of the city, we we estimate that a student who rides the bus in the Stonewall Jackson zone will add eleven minutes in the morning and eleven minutes in the afternoon to their bus commute, based on the way our routes run. So, to answer the the question there there at the end, our our board has already voted to consolidate Washington Lee, Stonewall Jackson, and Highland View. That vote was taken very early on in this process. At the end of the day, what we're approving is this this school building that you see before you there, enough to, you know, six hundred, six hundred and fifty students. The decision about how that is consolidated will be made by our board. And I I'm not sure if their intent is to make that decision before they bring it to you for a vote or after. But again, that that would be something that is in the purview of of the school board. Is that, is that a request on your behalf, Mr. Hartley, or is that just a general question?
Well, I mean, I do think, you know, when we vote, no one, you know, I mean, granted, we're the funding agency, and I've said that before. It is y'all's decision, but I mean, what are we voting for? You know, are we voting to have, you know, the, because the size of the school may change, you mentioned that, that you could potentially save some money there. You know, I think definitely the the public and their view of this would change, probably. The comments that we would get, as well as the school board would get, with, you know, some people might oppose one thing, some people might not, some people might oppose it just in general, just think we can't afford it. But, you know, I think, knowing what we're going to do before we vote to to go down that path of appropriating something, I think, would be very helpful for for a whole lot of reasons.
Yes, sir, I'm I'm with you. I will carry that message to my board in case they didn't hear it tonight.
Well, I'm going to start out with, that was a really good presentation you delivered tonight. You sure, you've clearly established that this city is financially on some good ground over what it was just four or five years ago. And the school system is definitely closer and getting closer to a new school. I mean, everybody wants, everybody would love to, to be able to give the kids another school. Sure, it's needed. Okay? Well, I'm going to start out with, Mr. Hartley asked that question about what is the intentions of the school board? And how are y'all going to propose this to us? Is it one school, two schools, three schools? We need to know this way before December. We need to let the community know. Because the, the Highlandview, not Highlandview, the one-school system was not very well-received back when it was presented. The parents and the public needs to know what your school's intention, school board intentions are with this new school. I personally like the multi-schools that we have right now, okay? They serve this city very well. They're strategically placed. And like it was brought up tonight, you know, y'all was able to keep our schools open through this pandemic. You know, if you have an outbreak in one school, you still got three that you can keep open. Well, if you have an outbreak in one school, you're down, because you shut the whole school down. So, that's stuff you need to think about.
Right. In a terrible situation, it would, but we didn't have to shut any schools down throughout the pandemic.
Yeah, yeah.
We quarantined some students, but we didn't.
Y'all done a very good job. But I work numbers, okay? I'm all in favor of a new school if we can afford it. But we have to demonstrate that we can afford it, okay? One, I know that our assets and everything in the city has went up considerably, okay? And we've paid off a lot of debt through the year, through the past couple of years, okay? I'd like to ask the CFO to come up with, how much borrowing power do we truly have right now today? Because even though you're going through a third-party, and it's not considered debt, I, I don't agree with that, because I believe that leases are debt. You owe that money. It, it is an obligation, is a commitment, okay? Twenty-four million dollars. Do we have that capacity? And I'm not asking you right now, this very minute, but I need to know this before December and when y'all come, come back to us. And, two, this fixed cost, you said twenty-four million dollars. There's always hidden expenditures, expenditures when you're building something. Trust me, I know. Nothing goes to plan, okay? Now, this twenty-four million dollars, is that for the school building structure itself? Or does that include all the sidewalks, roads, all the infrastructure that has to be laid out, coming and going on this build? I need to know all of that.
I can answer that.
Because roads and sidewalks and all the dirt work that has to be done can get very expensive really quick.
Do you want me to answer that before you go to your next question?
What's that?
You want me to answer that before you go to your next question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I do know the answer to that question. This includes, basically, all the groundwork, all, it gives us a, a, a set amount for furnishings inside the building, covers everything except for technology. It, that includes the gym, the earthwork, the roadwork to the school, the sidewalks around the school. What it doesn't include is the technology infrastructure that we have to put in there, and it does not include any changes to the city streets that you have to make from where our road connects to the city street. But it includes everything else. It includes all the financial costs. As a matter of fact, once we get the guaranteed maximum price that Mr. Hartley suggested, if they go above that, they have to eat it. If they go below that, we share, we get to split that money at the end of the project.
Okay. I want to answer your question. Our, this year twenty-one audit is in final review. Those, those statements will be presented December the fourteenth, but preliminary numbers do not show twenty-four million dollars of legal debt margin. And, and it's right around twenty. That may change. We're in final review. Those numbers aren't final, but that's where we are.
So, we're at about twenty?
With the lea, with the legal debt margin. And yes, sir, and I, those are draft numbers. They may change, but that's where we are right now, okay?
Okay.
That's, that's huge. That's a big increase from two thousand. I wish I'd have had that to fit on my slide there earlier.
See, time can be your friend if you plan, if you plan and strategize. Time can be your friend, but a few years ago, time was our worst enemy.
Well, and that, you know, I will agree, one of the reasons that I think that making this decision now, there was two main reasons. Number one, interest rates will never be this low again. And number two, if we don't vote to approve this in December, the two million dollars that I brought in, in my bags with me tonight is off the table. That, this is time-sensitive.
What is your deadline on that?
We have to have it spent by 2024. Now, the, the school would open in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. If we don't break ground this spring, we will lose our approval to use this two million dollars. We won't lose the four hundred thousand. We get to spend that at our discretion. But the two million dollars that we have approved via VDOE has to be spent by 2004. And when we submitted our plan, we gave a very, very tight eighteen-month timeline to start building the school this upcoming spring and open it in the fall of twenty-three. That, that's why, that's one of, two reasons for urgency. Number one, interest rates will never be this low again. And number two, if we post, if we kick this can down the road, there's two million dollars in the can.
Do you think the, do you think the August 2023 opening is realistic with a building of this size? And, you know, I know that with anything that the city has built, you know, there's usually, and with anything anybody builds, there's usually a, delays that come up that are unexpected. So, do you think it's realistic?
So, there, there's certainly going to be stress on the contractor and the superintendent to meet that deadline. There's a lot of things that could deal with that weather, as we know, is always one of those things that affect construction timelines, but currently, there's a supply chain issue. So, that could potentially impact, and just the ability to get workers. And so, that is actually one of the questions that has come up, I think, as this has been bid out, is, you know, what local contractors, because we did encourage JA Street to use as much local contract work as possible, so that it would also have, you know, a stimulus effect on our economy. But the ability to find workers to do this work, whether you're building a school or putting an HVAC unit on top of a building, I mean, it's hard to find supplies, and it's also hard to find labor. So, can I, can I guarantee that we'll get in there on August the twentieth of 2023? No. Will we work our very best, and will, will we make that part of our negotiations? Absolutely. But you, you know, nothing's certain.
I guess what I'm asking is, if, say it gets pushed back from, you know, August of twenty-three to February of twenty-four, A, would you, would you move students during a school year? And B, would that affect the two million dollars that are accessible right now?
Well, we, our requirements are to ha, are to, we can use this money to plan for, prepare for, respond to, or, another verb, the pandemic. And our deadline, your deadline, you have to earmark your funds by 2024 and spend it by 2026. For whatever reason, the federal government says schools have to have their entire amount spent by 2024 to be able to use that. And so, if we started to see that we weren't going to meet a deadline, the very first call, I would pick up the phone, I would call the state superintendent, explain our situation, and find out how, how that would impact our ability to use those funds. Now, our plan, the way that we're looking at this now, is to make a down payment on the front end to get those costs down. And so, hopefully, that money will already be accounted for on that end. But there's some of those legal details that, after we, you know, as we get approval, we'll have to have those answers. But yes, we, we must have it spent by 2024. The current plan gets us in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
You say by, you mean like by January of twenty-four, or by December of twenty-four?
Do you know the month, Ms. Jones, the month in twenty-four that we have to have it spent?
Everything has been claimed and spent by November twenty, twenty twenty-four.
November of twenty twenty-four.
Okay. So, so you, you're covered for that school year, basically, okay?
Well, if there's no further comments from the council or the school board, I, I just wanted to say thank you again for coming in, and thank you all for coming in, and...
What, uh, could you, Dr. Parryton, could you email us a copy of this presentation?
Yes. Joey, you have it already, if you...
I was going to say, that's, it's really good information, and it'd be helpful to kind of sit down and digest some of it.
Absolutely. And I'm, as you know, I'm open to meet any time to answer any additional questions. Call me, email me, come over to the office. I'll come to where you are. Obviously, we, we want you to make an informed decision. We've informed you a lot over the last four or five years, but, you know, that's not going to stop now. We want you to be part of the process. So, anything I can do to help you get to your yes or your no, I'm, I'm happy to oblige. Mr. Foster.
And, and, and before I close things, I know there's questions that was brought up that really didn't answer. As chairman, though, I will tell you that before that process comes to you, we'll make sure that you'll know what we're going to vote for as a board as a whole. Now, I could stand up here all day and say what I'd like, but that's only Tyrone Foster. And Tyrone Foster may not even have a vote in it anyway down the road. Because I'd say, let's build a new jail, and build, build a new school too. So, but, but with that being said, I'll guarantee you that we, you will get that information so you can make an educated and informed decision on where, which way the board is going to go as far as the two-school or the three-school, okay?
Anything else?
With that being said, I now bring the two thousand twenty-one, November twenty-third Bristol-Virginia School Board to a close. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Before moving on to the next item, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll reconvene shortly. All right. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, item two, presentation from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. For public comment, there was one person who signed up for public comment for this item. That was Samuel Weddington. Is he still here? Okay. Staff report, and the, for the staff report, we have from the VDEM. I'm sorry. Yes, if he gave you that as his proxy, go ahead and, and come on up. As you're coming up for public comment, just a reminder for anyone who doesn't know, for public comment, everyone has an allotted three minutes to speak. When you begin speaking, the green light will come on. When the yellow light comes on, that means your time is about up. And when the red light comes on, that means your three minutes is up. So, we ask everyone to state your name and your address in the microphone, so everyone can hear it, watching at home and for the record. We ask you to be mindful of your time and each other's.
Tina Cook, Bristol, Tennessee, 105 Forest Hills Drive. I'm here because I live so close to a directly line, not by driving. It's unbearable for me. I'm eighty-one years old, and I'm sick all the time. Yesterday, I want to leave the house, but it's so cold, I couldn't leave. It smells inside and outside the house. I have to clean the countertops with alcohol, wash the dishes, wash my clothes, because everything smells. Any of you, you are welcome to my house any time to see for yourselves. It's caustic. You ask the smell, it's, it's just not healthy at all for your skin, for everything, affects everything. I want to know if you're going to talk today, tonight, what you're going to do about it. If you have prepared, or you can inform us. When this site was blasted, when it was the quarry, I could feel my house shaking, all the dishes. Now, I live there since seventy-six. How many crabs are underground and underground, you know, springs that this is shifting through to come all the way where we are? We need to know what you're doing about that, to finding out, not just around the site, but come around my house and everywhere else, and test the air and test the ground. I almost called yesterday because I was so sick. I was almost ready to go to the medicine room. My nose hurt. I had a hemorrhage. I bleed through the nose. I'm eighty-one, you know. I, I'm not healthy as a young person. So, I want you tonight to tell us exactly what's going on, in a very compound, so we can understand it. What else have you done? Who is doing it? So, we can at least can be informed. And are you going to reimburse me for the doctor's visits, for the Lysol spray that I have to go outside, not to have to breathe, for the nose sprays, the eyes infections that I get, for the skin infections? I had a wonderful skin. I never had to put a thing in my, in my skin before. Now, I get lesions. Okay? Yeah, I'm eighty-one, but it's still. So, I just want to be informed, because we're living in a limbo. We don't know what's going on. And like I say, I cannot live like this. I'm eighty-one. I don't want to die. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, we will have a, we will have a landfill update shortly. But first, I wanted to introduce, for the next item, our presentation from VDEM, Mr. Tim Estes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to talk to you about this very stressful situation. I'm sure it's stressful for you and all your citizens. With me tonight, I have our state deputy coordinator for disaster services, Mr. John Northon, and also Ms. Leanne Van Devere, who is our recovery and grants manager, and they both drove down from Richmond to be here tonight. Mr. Eads asked me to be here to, to speak about declaring a local emergency, and what that process is, and what that would mean for the city of Bristol. In your city emergency operations plan, which you adopted, I believe, in 2019, I'm sorry, I thought somebody was saying something. But it, it stated that the city council shall declare by resolution an emergency to exist when the threat to an actual occurrence of a disaster is or threatens to be of sufficient severity and magnitude to require significant expenditure and coordinated response in order to prevent or alleviate damage, loss, hardship, or suffering. A local emergency may be declared by the director of emergency management with the consent of the local governing body. After that declaration is made, then it has to come back to you in order to approve that declaration within forty-five days. Typically, declarations are made for winter weather storms, hurricanes, or other types of disasters, plane crashes, that type of thing. Anything that is acute, that happens and is typically a non-planned event. Anything that is chronic, or a chronic issue, or creates a chronic issue for your locality, we don't know of any locality that has adopted a local emergency for that, or done the ordinance to do that. So, it's, it's hard for us in VDEM to come and tell you, yes, you should, or no, you shouldn't, because that's not what we do. We don't advise the governor to declare emergencies. The governor declares emergencies for the state. We do advise him, but we don't tell him either to make a yes or no decision. And that's not what we're here for tonight. In the Code of Virginia, forty-four dash one forty-six dot twenty-one, it, it talks about the same information about declaring an emergency. When the locality does declare an emergency, it allows you to do several things. It allows you to, in the locality, so in the city of Bristol, if they declared, it would allow you to release restrictions on fuel trucks so they could haul more fuel. It would allow you to do procurement outside of your normal planning that you're allowed to do in your procurement plans. But that's not really all it does for you. There is nothing that the state would offer you if you were to declare a local emergency. We don't have anything to offer you to help with this situation that you're going through, what the citizens are going through. If you were to ask us to, to help you, what we would do, we work with Chief Armstrong, your emergency manager. And if he has a request for an item, that's what we do. We look for resources, and we try to find those items for you, if you can't find them locally. But everything that you ask for, you have to pay for. It's not, you're not going to get anything for free. The pandemic was different. The pandemic, we dealt with COVID. You declared a local emergency for that, as did, I think, all one hundred and thirty-eight localities across Virginia. And we were able to provide PPE masks and gloves and hand sanitizer to you at no cost. Virginia purchased those, but we're working with the federal government to be reimbursed for that. But it was a presidential declaration. That's why we're going to get that money back from the state. We don't have that here, and I don't know that you would get that here in this situation. In Hurley and Buchanan County, they had the flooding back in August. They did receive public assistance declaration from the president. So, the local government and nonprofits get, have the ability to recover money that they spent. But the individual assistance for individuals who lost their homes, nearly a hundred homes were either washed away or fully destroyed or damaged, can't be rebuilt. They did not get an individual assistance declaration. We are appealing that decision, but we don't know what that will happen, what will happen with that, until probably next month. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have about the local declaration, if anything, if you have any questions at all.
Well... Well, hearing none, I do appreciate you coming to explain the process, how it works, what exactly that means, because we've heard that terminology a lot and about what we should do. So, I have no questions if there's no other questions from the council.
I will leave you with this, Mr. Mayor, that every emergency starts locally and ends locally. So, the decision to declare a local emergency is solely based on what you have here. So, your emergency manager, your director of emergency management, how they advise you to do. And you know, they're very well-versed in what they do. They're very good in what they do. I worked with Chief Armstrong a lot. I've worked, before the pandemic, we worked a lot together, meeting every month on the local emergency planning committee, working with active shooter drills and other things. So, he is very well-versed. He knows what he needs to do. So, I'll just leave it at that. If anything else we can answer for you, we'd be happy to answer that for you. We'll try to assist you in any way we can. And I guess that's all I have left, is any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is landfill update. We've had a few people who've signed up for public comment for this item. The first person who signed up is Michael Pollard.
Thank you, members of the council and city staff. Sometime that, well, a number of times before the council, I've talked about the need for creativity and for thinking outside the box. I spoke with someone, I don't remember if it was before the council or perhaps to a particular member of the council, but anyway, one of the examples that I gave of thinking outside the box was concerning the landfill and based on the idea that we have heard numerous times from our consultants, that the main problem of the landfill is concerning the excess water. And while my example of creative thinking may not be usable in and of itself, it's not intended so much to be, but to be, to prompt creative thinking. That example is, could you perhaps build a dome like over an athletic field over it? We've heard estimates of roughly $30 million to close the landfill. Would we be able to build a dome for, say, $10 million, then leave it open and have the major problems of the landfill instantly solved, because no longer would we have rainwater collecting there? There could be potential issues that would need to be addressed with the idea, but some creative thinking may help with those. For example, the major structural issue of the landfill is that it's a bowl. A dome that then extends between sides of the bowl would make use of that structural issue and use it as a benefit to reduce costs. One of the main issues in building any structure is wind load. And building a dome that uses overlapping louvers to allow air through would reduce wind load while still shedding the vast majority of rain. Some rain may go through, but that, we need a pump in the landfill anyway, because the decomposition process itself generates some liquid that has to be pumped out. Well, that brings me to the primary issue for this evening, that of the water pump. We found out, we as in the members of the public, found out over the weekend that apparently there has been an issue going on in the landfill for a very long time, and that is concerning a water pump that has not been working properly. We have then apparently gone a significant amount of time generating dramatically more odor than we should have because of a problem that has not been resolved. I would wonder when the problem was noticed. The Department of Environmental Quality cited that in last May, but someone had already noted problems at that time, because they had already purchased materials, materials that had never been used. In any case, I am out of time, so I'll leave it there. I would like to know what the timeline was, that things were noticed and what was actually done about it, because obviously, the problem was not solved, even though our consultant said that the water is the main problem and that capturing the gas is merely addressing the symptoms, not the cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. The next person who signed up for public comment is Ms. Becky Evenden.
Hi, Becky Evenden. I'm at 210 Race Day Center Drive, Bristol, Tennessee. And I have some prepared remarks, but I just wanted to start in response to VDEM, who's here tonight, just getting to meet Tim and Leanne and John tonight. Leanne did mention that she is in charge of grant procurement for disaster situations, and I would encourage you all, you know, you do have some, several chemicals that have tested in the air over ATSDR's minimal risk level, which means that you are over that threshold where you start to see health effects. Nobody from a health-based agency is denying the idea that there are health-based effects from what's in the air. If there is a way to work together with them to consider air purifiers or other relief options, I think that would be a great idea. So, what I came here to talk about tonight is, I've had a lot of people, kind of who are technical, who have asked me the question of, where are the engineers on the landfill project? Where are the engineers? If I understand correctly, the public works director is gone, the solid waste director is gone, and any engineers on the consultant side stay as far away as possible, it seems. I know there are some engineers at Draper Aiden in the background that know what's going on, but they're not really on site to see what's happening day to day. There's also the question of, where is the landfill staff? I know there's still positions that are open on the city website. And I think I would just point out that if you don't have engineers and you don't have the staff and you are dealing with a full-blown crisis, you cut services. An understaffed facility is a risk both to your workers and to your community. You stop the commercial haulers. You throw all your people at the problem with a focus to keep them safe, and you work as fast and as hard as you can to get this under control. I don't feel like this is what the city's been doing. I don't feel like the city's been multitasking well, and I think that kind of is evidenced by the amount of time that it took to drill the wells, and also the fact that the wet well is just now being dealt with after many months of having it on the engineering agenda. I also say that I feel like the city is failing to provide relief to residents who are suffering now, while these other steps need to be happening simultaneously. So, my question to you all is, who will turn this ship around? Will it be you, Ms. Knave? Will it be you, Mr. Osborne? Will it be you, Mr. Farnham? Will it be you, Mr. Hartley? Will it be you, Mr. Wingard? Who's going to take over the entire approach to this crisis? And if you do, please let me know how I can help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. The next person who signed up for public comment is Mr. Kellogg.
Good evening. I'm very pleased, it's past my bedtime. Joel Kellogg, 1204 Maryland Avenue, Bristol, Tennessee. I'm going to start with a definition here, that Mr. Estes used the word chronic. So, chronic of an illness persisting for a long time or constantly recurring, or of a problem long-lasting and difficult to eradicate. So, both of those definitions apply to the situation we have going on here. Again, if we go back to reading the Code of Virginia, you know, and I won't read this in its entirety, but it says, loss, hardship, or suffering. Okay? So, we got all three of those going on, because we have residents whose home is now just a storage unit, because they've evacuated. They can't live here any longer. Okay? We cannot, can't be in our houses some nights. And we've talked about this, we've talked about this. Today, we gave out 41 air purifiers. Not the city of Bristol, Virginia, not council. These are private citizens and organizations that have donated money to try and provide some relief for our citizens. And I'll tell you what, there's hundreds of names, people who need relief, who have asked for it, who are crying out for it. We're doing what we can. We got to reach in our pocket, okay? You talk about declaring a state of emergency. If you do that, it opens up procurement. Procurement would purchase air purifiers. It would purchase some temporary relocation. It would purchase some relief for the suffering and the hardship and the loss that your residents are experiencing almost nightly. And I've been here too many times. I'm sure you're sick of seeing me. I'll tell you what, I'm sick of being here too. I live in Tennessee. I can't affect change the way that the residents here can, but I'm going to be here. I'm going to be here until this problem is solved and until you stand up and provide some relief for the people of your city. I don't see a Virginia, I don't see a Tennessee side. I see residents who are suffering on both sides. Okay? You want to build a brand-new school, that's fine. Maybe if you got the money, but you don't. But your education is not going to be any better if the children are sick and they can't sleep at night in their own homes. So, maybe, before you look to the future, you need to look to the present right now, and you need to address this situation, because this is chronic, it's a loss, it's a hardship, and it is suffering. And you are all contributing to that, every day that you ignore this crisis. Thank you.
The next person who signed up for public comment is Mr. Chris Nupp.
How's everybody doing tonight? Chris Nupp, I live at 2382 Shakesville Road. Been there for 38 years. I'm proud of my home. I mean, I try to call it home, okay? But it's just now getting so bad. We got to do something. And I know you guys inherited all this stuff from past people, but you guys took this position to try to correct it, try to keep our city safe, clean, whatever it takes. Am I right on that part? Okay. I don't know what I'm, you guys are getting a lot of exposure right now, and it's going to get a whole lot worse. I hate it for yous, but like I just said, you guys are sitting here in this position. You chose it. We got to do something about it. I don't know what we're going to do, but something's got to be done. Something's got to be worked on harder. I hate to say it, we got to work around the clock on it. You got people here who are ready to step up to help yous, but nobody's asked. We're dealing with, it's like this morning, I got up 4:30 this morning. It was miserable. I don't know where you guys live, but if you come over on Shakesville or any other part of the towns, it's just miserable. Spend a couple hours. Yeah, we're up here raising cane about it, but like I said, we got to do something, and I hate you guys are in this situation. You inherited it. I worked in that landfill back in 1998, 1999, when I had my business. I was one of the first ones in there on the first liner part. I'm not going to name no names or anything like that, but there was a lot of stuff done back then that shouldn't have been done. Turn a blind eye, I guess, but that's beside the point. Today's the day. Whatever happened back then, we got to fix it. Like I said, work around the clock, whatever. You have a lot of people suffering, part of my family, a lot of these people back here, their families, your families. I don't know. I don't know what else to do. Like I said, you're getting a lot of exposure on this, and it's fixing to come down pretty hard on you guys. And you know it. And you hate to face it, but we got to face it. We all had to face it. I don't know what else to say about it. No, I'm tired of it. 38 years in my home. I love this city. I worked hard to be there. Everything's paid for. Man, I'd like to leave, and that's bad to say. That's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next person who signed up is Mr. Jaden Pippen.
Thank you, guys, for letting me come up here tonight. I'm nervous. I've never done this stuff before.
You're fine. You wrote on your note that you're 15. Is this your first time here?
Yes, sir.
Don't be nervous. We're just regular people.
I got butterflies. I wanted to talk about, you know, you know, it's hard. I can't even go outside and play basketball nowadays without smelling it. And like people get up and go to school in the morning and, you know, go to work and they have to smell the dump and like, and even like the air purifiers, they're not, like they may help the quality of the air, but they're not taking the smell away in the homes. We still smell it in our house. And, you know, I wish that, like, there's got to be something that we can do about it. And I can't even go outside and play football with my friends without smelling the dump. And I live in 257 Wildwood Drive, you know, in Bristol, Tennessee, and it's not like much that I can think about. When I go outside, it's the strong smell of the dump, but I just hope we can do something, because, you know, Jesus is coming back soon, and I hope before he comes, that we can do something about this dump. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next person who signed up is Mr. Kenny Wright.
Thanks very much to all of you. It seems like the city council is really beginning to take this seriously, and I appreciate it. And I want to say thank you to the Virginia Department of Environmental Equality or Emergency Management, who are here, because that, I think, is a great sign. I want to say thank you for them for taking it seriously. I just want to let you know that I think some people have suggested that the citizens of Bristol are overreacting or exaggerating the type of harms that they're receiving from this landfill, but I think that's absolutely untrue, and I hope you realize it. I would much rather be here, be with my family right now than be here. I think everyone in this room feels that way, the couple of days before Thanksgiving, but people are really experiencing some severe hardships from this, and that's why we're all here and really concerned. So, thank you for taking it seriously. Folks talked earlier about Bristol and the new school and sort of the improvements that you've made as a city council, and I want to say that, you know, I grew up in Bristol. I went to Van Pelt. My mother lives on New Hampshire Avenue in the Kingtown area, and every evening, not every evening, but many evenings, she can't go outside, because she'll start coughing. The smells, people have said, will come into the home through the air conditioning system or just seep in, because it's so strong and pervasive. It is shocking to me that this kind of thing is happening in the city that I grew up in, and it's deeply concerning to me. But Bristol should be known for its natural beauty, the great people who live here, not for a toxic landfill. We shouldn't be spoken of in the same terms as someplace like Flint, Michigan, that has been neglected and allowed to have problems build up over time. That's really concerning to me. So, I want to say thank you. I think it's great that you're thinking about looking into this notion of an emergency declaration. It seems to me that that's something that should be explored, because if it does allow you to start potentially leveraging funds from the state or from the federal government, that seems helpful. While I was sitting there, I looked up the Virginia Code that was cited by the emergency management official who is here, and it mentioned that a disaster is defined. It may not, you may think of something acute, and I don't know, this is not correct, but it mentions that it can include a man-made disaster that can involve environmental contamination that causes hardship, loss, suffering. That's the kind of things that are happening here, when people can't go outside without coughing, they can't enjoy recreational activities, their property values are diminished. You talked about all those things. We have a chance to be known for a casino, for recreation, for music, the kind of things you want a city to be known for. We shouldn't be known for not being able to go outside, wanting to move because your property values are diminished, because you can't enjoy the home that you've built for years, as my mother's experiencing. So, for that, please take this seriously, realize that we're all taking this seriously and coming together, because we are so concerned about this. It is really impacting people, and if you need anything, I think it's great that everyone said the citizens are here to help you, the citizens of Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee, I think all are very concerned and are looking forward to helping you to move this forward and make some change. So, thanks so much.
Thank you. That's the last person who signed up for public. That's the last person who signed up for public comment for this item. Staff report.
Uh, Council members of the public, I'll try to address some of the concerns that were brought up tonight in public comments before I give an update on what's occurred at the landfill, at least as of today. If you've signed up for our landfill updates on our website, we have been posting daily what our engineers and consultants have been doing to remedy the situation that everyone has discussed tonight. Uh, Mr. Wright, I don't know if he left or is still here. But we do take this seriously. We've taken it seriously since last December, when we recognized that there was an issue coming from that landfill. I don't believe either myself or any members of council have ever said that we believe people are over-exaggerating the problems. I think all of us have experienced the odors of the landfill on multiple occasions. And I know a couple... And a couple of council members live in very close proximity to the landfill, and the others are nearby. So you did mention the emergency exploration. And with Mr. Estes here, I want to make sure that when I say this, it's correct and that he agrees with what I'm saying. Declaring an emergency does not necessarily open up any state or federal funds for the city of Bristol in this situation, nor does it help us get any sort of resources at this time. I think, and if the... I see Mr. Estes nodding his head in agreement. So, and it's not that we're not taking it seriously or not understanding the issues that people have. It's just that declaring a state of emergency does not necessarily get us anything more than what we already have or can have just by virtue of being a city and being able to do what we need to do to fix these problems. Jaden, I think he's still here. You know, um, it's very important for young people to get involved and take responsibility for the communities that they live in. And coming here tonight, I know that was a big step for you. Uh, you said you've never spoke in front of a crowd like this before. And, you know, being able to do that and come up here tonight and make those comments that you did, I recognize that. I remember as a kid playing basketball in my backyard and playing football. And those are some of the most enjoyable moments that I have in my life. Uh, you know, some of my best friends and my brother and I, we would play all the time in our backyard. And it hurts when I recognize, and I've known this for a year now, that people are not able to enjoy their backyards and their homes like they have been in the past. My goal and this council's goal is to fix this situation as quickly as possible. Has everything gone perfect? No. I wish things could have gone perfect, but it hasn't. But we're doing exactly what our experts have told us to do to correct this problem. The Virginia Department of Environmental Quality has said what we are doing will correct the problem. So is the Tennessee Department of Environmental Control. They have all said this will correct the problem. Now, I will believe it when I don't smell it. And that's where I'm at. I want this problem resolved sooner rather than later. I think everybody in this room, at least on this side and probably back there, wants this problem solved sooner rather than later. We hope by mid-December, after all the wells are connected and have been adjusted to work properly, that we will see a significant decrease in the odor that has been coming from our landfill. Mr. Nup, we want it fixed. I promise you, there is not one person in here that wants this fixed any more than I do. I recognize what each person has been dealing with. It's not something that I've taken lightly over the past year. And it's not something that I'm gonna take lightly until it gets fixed. Mr. Pollard, you talked about creativity and thinking outside the box. Probably a month to six weeks ago, I drew on the city's whiteboard on one of my five whiteboards in my conference room, the... A plan to do exactly what you talked about, putting a roof over the landfill. Now, one, it costs a substantial sum of money. And then, two, how do we do it in such a way that it's not going to impact operations moving forward as far as installing new gas wells as we continue to move forward through this process? And, you know, how long is it gonna take? And really, will that solve the problem? We all recognize that water is part of that issue. But will that really solve the problem? I don't know that answer right now. But it's something that I've discussed with our consultants and engineers. And people looked at me like I was crazy. Uh, in regards to the pumps and the wet wells, the pumps have never not worked. They are working, and we're still pumping out millions of gallons of water from the wet wells on a daily... Or I shouldn't say million, on a daily basis, but on a monthly basis. What we have with the pumps, we received that warning letter on May the 27th. And at that time, I had discussions with DEQ. And I believe... At that time, DEQ says your number-one issue is to correct the odor issue. And that's what we've been trying to do for the past year, is correct the odor issue. And we'll have those pumps repaired and replaced here within the next seven to eight weeks, based on, um, the contractor's comments that we've hired to do this. Ms. Evenden, you're correct in the fact that we do not have a Public Works Director at the moment. We do not have a Solid Waste Director. As far as the remaining members of staff out there, I believe there's only one open position currently at the landfill as far as the number of staff at that... That work within the landfill. You know, you have a bachelor in chemical engineering. You've been deeply involved in this landfill for maybe a year. I don't know when you became involved. The Solid Waste Director position's still open. So, I mean, you know, you said you're here to help. And it's open. We, uh, this past... Was it yesterday? I had interviews with candidates in regards to the Public Works Director position. Uh, I hope to have that position filled sometime in the first part of January. And at the moment, we are still reviewing candidates for the Solid Waste Director position. It's still open for anyone that may have a Bachelor's of Chemical Engineering degree that would want to apply. So with all that being said, we hope by mid-December that we won't have to see you all back here in January at our first meeting complaining about the landfill odor. I would love to start out 2021 on a different foot compared to what... How we started out... Or start out 2022 on a different foot than how we started out 2021. This is a situation that should have never happened, but it did. And we have to fix that. And I'm not sure which one of you said it. It may have been you, Mr. Nup. All of us here are in positions of leadership. We are charged by the Code of Virginia to manage the city and do what we need to do to lead a city. And part of that leadership is making right decisions in tough times. And we're doing our best to make those right decisions. Some people agree with them, some don't. But making right decisions requires us to listen to our experts. And when they advise us to do certain things, those are the things that we need to do. And I've said it before and I'm gonna say it again tonight. Every time the city has refused to listen to experts, we have ended up in a mess. And as long as I'm in this chair and our experts are telling us to do certain things to correct issues associated with the landfill or anything else that the city is telling us to do, if there are experts in that field, my recommendation to council is, listen to the experts. Because I'm not a landfill expert. I don't think any of these five are landfill experts. And not to be dismissive, but I don't think anybody out here is a landfill expert either. So we have to listen and trust those experts and do exactly what they tell us to do to fix these issues. So with all that being said, quick update on where we are with the landfill and putting in the... Connecting the gas wells. As of this afternoon, at 4:00 PM was my latest update. Uh, there should be three new additional wells that were hooked up today in the southern end of the landfill. Plus, we have four wells that were opened up, I think, early this past week or late last week. I can't remember the exact date. And when we say those wells are open and operating, that does not mean they are at 100% capacity right now. You have to slowly open those wells to regulate the gases that are coming out of there. Right now, each of these wells would be open at about 5%. What we do know is the amount of gas appears to have increased, that we are now either burning through our flare or sending to Injaco, which is a good thing. That's what we want to happen. We want more gas to be pulled out of that landfill and captured in our flare system or being sent to Injaco. Let's see. I know there's been some questions about the flare and the composition or the, um... How the flare flame looks. Really, what that amounts to is it's the volume and quality of methane that is being sent through the flare system as to how that flame will look. And when you have more methane, that's when you have more blue. And when there's less methane, that's when you have less blue. We are... Based on the last conversation with SCS, uh, that is installing the connection system, we anticipate this to be completed mid-December. I can't give you an exact date yet. They have 50 days from the start of the contract, which is on November 5th. Uh, 50 days would end on December 25th. I would like to be able to say that on Christmas morning, everything has been connected and no one smells an odor. And Santa doesn't have to wear a mask not to smell an odor on Christmas Eve night. But I would hope that will be done well before Christmas Day, uh, because I do know the individuals that are working out there have families and wanna be with their families as much as everybody else does. So my hope is mid-December, I'll be able to report that everything is hooked up and we are pulling more gas and that we will start seeing a noticeable difference here shortly. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Third Amendment to the Landfill Gas Purchase Agreement between the City of Bristol and Injaco. Staff report.
Counsel, before you is a Third Amendment to the Landfill Gas Purchase Agreement. This agreement here has to do with a blower that is connected to our flare system that also helps pull gas to Injaco. Injaco will purchase that... The blower that connects to their flare system. And in return, what we would do, right now, we're getting 5% of the revenue. In return, we would reduce that revenue to 2% over the next three years or calendar years of 2022, 23, and 24. Uh, in theory, with the addition of gas that would be being produced from the landfill and captured, the reduction from 5% to 2% would probably not mean there would be too much of a significant difference in the amount of funds that the city would receive from Injaco. As you all know, uh, the amount of funds that we receive from Injaco are very small. And it is not a significant impact, one way or the other, on a revenue line item within the Solid Waste Disposal Fund. I would ask, counsel, allow me to sign this agreement so that, uh, Injaco can move forward with that purchase of the blower for the Solid Waste Disposal Fund.
Thank you. We have a few people who signed up for public comment for this item. The first person is Mr. Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Eads, uh, pretty well answered my questions in that. Uh, this is about the first time we've had the public comment after the staff report, and he's answered my questions. I was wondering what the original percentage was, and you answered that. Um, I was going to ask what the, uh, amount was before and after. Uh, but you generalized that as well. Thank you.
The next person who signed up for public comment is Ms. Becky Evenden.
Hi, Becky Evenden, 210 Race Day Center Drive, Bristol, Tennessee. Um, I had just a couple of questions that I hope that you all will answer in your discussion. One of those is, who is gonna be responsible to maintain the landfill gas blower? I don't see that in your contracts. I think that's an important question. Um, and also, in your amendment and in your contract from before, I don't think I actually saw who was responsible to drill new gas wells. I know that's been kind of a point of discussion or disagreement in the past. So I would advise you to, um, have a discussion about whether or not your amendment needs to address who is responsible to maintain and repair the new landfill gas blower. Is it on the Injaco side or on the landfill side of infrastructure? And additionally, with wanting to keep that blower speed going, who is responsible to drill more wells going forward? Thank you.
Thank you. That's the, uh, the last person who signed up for public comment for this item. What's the pleasure of the council?
Uh, I move for the approval of the Amendment to the Landfill Gas Purchase Agreement between the City of Bristol and Injaco.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Osborne and a second from Mr. Hartley. Council discussion.
Well, I would like to know what the timeline is on this second, uh, flare.
This is a blower, not a flare. So it's separate than... Than a flare system. Uh, this is connected to the flare system. That is actually what allows the gas to be pulled through the system. Uh, we would anticipate this could potentially be in, hopefully, within the next six to eight weeks. Um, we... They're working with some vendors right now to determine availability to get that done. But I don't... I don't have a good answer for that right now because I don't think we've received one. And I'll just go ahead and answer Ms. Evenden's questions. You know, counsel, going forward, I think there needs to be an assumption that the city is responsible for anything that goes into that landfill, whether it's gas wells, whether it's a blower, um, you know... It's our landfill. So I don't think there's... At least not in my mind, there's not a question who's gonna maintain that blower. That's gonna be on the city to maintain that blower.
Um, in the contract, um, it says that the new gas blower would be an amount not to exceed $50,000. So is that basically what the price is, $50,000? Or is there a potential little goover?
Based on what I've been told, it should be right around $50,000.
Okay. And, um, further into the contract in, uh, Amendment to Section 2.3, it says, um, it gives the table for 2%, and then it goes back to 5% in 2025 through the end of the contract. I didn't see... I don't have the... I didn't have the original contract anywhere in my files. How long does the... Does the contract run?
This contract will expire... I may not have the original on this one either. Let's see. Hold on just a second. No, I do. Counsel, I believe this was a 15-year contract. If I'm not mistaken, I'm trying to find exactly. Counsel, I can't find it right now.
That's okay.
I think it was a 15-year... I'm sorry, here we go. Yeah, 15-year contract. Um, and then Injaco may elect to extend that term for an agreement of three additional five-year terms as long as they are not in default of any part of the contract.
Okay. And I have one other question. So this isn't specifically in relation to the blower that we're talking about, but with Injaco generally. Do they have the capacity? And can you explain the capacity to handle the increased gases we'll be sending them when these... When these, um, wells are fired up?
Based on our current situation, our flare can handle up to about 1,250 CFM of gas that would be being produced.
Okay. And so they'll be able to... They'll be able to handle what we said.
Right. And this blower will allow them to handle up to that. Currently, we can probably handle 700 CFM.
Okay.
proceeds to pay for repairs of $1,874, economic development activities, a Virginia Business District resurgence, resurgence grant, $150,000 for total general fund appropriations, Solid Waste Disposal Fund, disposal operational expenses, wet well pump repairs with a budget of $600,000, and that is pulled from beginning balance cash carryover in the Solid Waste Disposal Fund for grand total of supplemental appropriation of $751,874. Staff does recommend that council approve this appropriation.
Thank you. We've had a few folks who signed up for public comment for this item. The first was Ms. Becky Evenden.
I think you all know where I live by now. Okay, so I had just a couple of comments that I think you all may want to discuss together. One was that regarding this procurement for the pump and for the wet well repairs, I understand from a June 15th letter from the City of Bristol to DEQ in response to the May warning letter, that the City of Bristol made sort of a tentative promise that they hoped to do the work to replace that pump and deal with that wet well within 30 days, or within 60 days, I believe. So 60 days within, of June 15th. We're way past that. I think it's important to ask why it has taken so long on that piece to begin procurement, why we haven't actually seen a bid or an engineering diagram or anything related to that work yet. I'm glad to see that it's on the procurement list, but this has taken a long time. I'd also like to point out that I'm not sure if BBU was consulted in the planning for this pump, or the, really, any work related to the wet well. And I know that, you know, the liquids that come out of that wet well go into your sanitary sewer system. That is run, there's a permit with BBU. If you're making changes to a pump, surely you want to make sure that your discharge rates will be within the limits of your permit. And I think just overall regarding, you know, procurement, it concerns me that I'm not seeing kind of a more aggressive procurement process at this point. I'm concerned that the city is just not seeing what's happening in that landfill as, I guess, being as incredibly complex and very serious as far as implications go if this is not fixed and continues to kind of spiral the way that it has. I know that you all, you know, believe that you're taking the right steps, but you could be doing procurement right now to get in, you know, an expert that has dealt with landfills that have really hot subsurface reactions and has been on the ground and looked at the data and made really good recommendations. I know you're relying on one company, but you could be procuring the services of a second consultant at this time to get an outside, outside opinion and just outside advice to make sure that you're taking the right steps. So I think just in general, I'd like to see, you know, a more aggressive procurement plan to address as soon as possible the concerns related to the landfill, looking at both the leachate, the question of how to really cover the top of that to keep rainwater from getting in, which might involve a cap, and just whether or not the right steps are being taken for that subsurface reaction, which is probably driving most of the odor issues from that landfill. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person who signed up for public comment is Mr. Kellogg.
Ms. Evenden is a tough act to follow. So I just want to go back and, and touch on a couple of things here. So, you know, while a state of emergency locally might not net you anything, except for does free procurement, as I, as I discussed earlier, it shows you're making an effort. It gets you some exposure, and it possibly would get you some state or federal aid down the road. Okay? This is a situation that's out of control. You need to ask for help. You've got to admit that this is beyond the capabilities of this local jurisdiction to handle. I'll also let you know, I think each one of you needs to pick up the phone and call this lady. She is the one that identified your SSR and notified DEQ. Okay? So this is, this is our expert, and you need to utilize her. She, she, I don't know how she does it. She doesn't sleep already. But she will, she will answer any questions. Her advice is, I seek her out for advice every day. So, all right, to get into mine here. So Saturday, some other members of Hope for Bristol, myself, did something that, another thing that y'all need to do. We went down to Kingtown and we walked and we knocked on doors. Okay? Sunshine and bright. You know what? When the sun shines in my house, I have a pretty good day, because generally, I'm not affected by the gas. But I'll tell you what, it's brutal down there. We walk past a stormwater drain down in there, and it is just spewing, spewing chemicals out of there. We backed away from it. I still smoke, I've cut down a lot, but I had a cigarette going. I stepped away from that, because I was worried that this was going to blow. That's how bad it is. I would, I would ask you all to go down there. Those people are, I, I, I just, I just can't. I won't go into that anymore. So, you know, in my spare time, I was watching a video almost, almost a year, or two years ago now, it was 12/10 of 19, I believe. So four of the five of you were up there. We had a discussion. So Ms. Marty was here, I love her, giving you all the business, telling you, you know, you don't have money for a new school. And you don't. Okay? Mr. Mumpower is talking about the landfill debt. Mr. Wingard, you actually called the landfill a beast, which is our unaffectionate name for, for this thing that comes into our homes and steals our breath at night. So, you know, I was wondering where that name originated from? I, I guess you, you coined it. You know, there's another resident at that time, too, he's raising a flag about this landfill. There's no cost for closing, there's no nothing. So before we spend any money on schools, you know what? This thing's going to have to be closed eventually. But I'm going to tell you right now that the citizens of Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee are going to get this landfill shut down, and it's coming soon. So y'all better prepare for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. That's the last person who signed up for public comment for this item. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the supplemental appropriation of the amount of $751,874.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Ms. Naev. Is there any council discussion?
I will just say thank you to the CFO for preparing this and putting it together. I think we do have, I would like to take special note of the, well, it went away. I'd like to take special note of the DHCD grant and thank our economic development specialist, Mr. Chapman, for his work on that. I think it'll be very beneficial. I know it has to do with bouncing back from COVID and stuff like that, and for downtown. So I think it's, I think it'll be very beneficial for us. So, so thank you, and thank you, Ms. Brannan, for your, for your work.
Just before we vote, go ahead and let the record state that I do have a conflict of interest with this item, because I'm employed by Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, and I will abstain from the vote.
Noted.
If there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Abstain.
Naev.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is the Ordinance for Assessment of Costs for an Electronic Summon System, Ordinance 21 hyphen 6. There was one person who signed up for public comment for this item, Mr. Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The fee seems to be based on charges, not convictions, but it doesn't specify who pays the fee. Someone who is guilty, in my opinion, should not pay any fees. After all, the Constitution, to which each of you has sworn an oath, demands that each person must be treated as innocent until and unless proven guilty. Second, I disagree with add-on fees in general. Someone who is assessed a fine should not need to worry about adding up fees that may exceed the fine itself. If the fine isn't appropriate for the violation, then perhaps you should petition the courts and our elected officials to have the fine appropriate for the offense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. Staff report, and tonight, we have Mr. Captain Milligan here, from the Police Department.
Good evening. I'm Captain Darryl Milligan with the Bristol, Virginia Police Department. I've worked as a police officer in the city for 34 years. Currently, as of November 19th of this year, our department's issued 4,119 tickets, summonses or otherwise arrest, like, and worked 312 crashes. The state gives the localities the permission to pass this ordinance, if they so wish, to add $5 administrative fees, flat rate, to help pay for the department to switch and maintain, implement, an electronic ticketing system, which basically is done by computer in the car and printed at the time. Currently, officers have to carry five copies summonses with them. When it's written, they're divided up and go several different ways. And we spend roughly $18,000 a year on printing tickets, just having them printed. And that's using state bid sources out of Richmond. While we would still have to keep some paper copies on hand for system failure, as you know, computers will lay down on you at time to time, but nearly, not nearly as many. This has several benefits. You only have to pay the fee if you're violating the law. If you don't want to pay the fee, don't violate the law. You have to actually get a traffic ticket. Instead of this time, it takes, we have two records clerks that spends countless hours logging these tickets in, typing them in, because the officers can't do this themselves in the car yet. Once they come in, the court clerks also have to enter this in. They have to set a code request. If this, an average traffic stop takes about 20 minutes on the side of the road, and that's if nothing else happens. And as most people hear from the news, traffic stops is one of those hazardous things police officers do, from the violator being violent to traffic, as recently with Weber City, where two officers just narrowly avoided being hit by a car sliding out of control. These electronic summonses are shown to speed up the time it takes to do a traffic stop, providing no other action has to be taken. The drive, the police officer can scan the license, it's loaded into the system, it populates, the only thing the officer has to do is set the court date and type in the violation. There's a printer attached in the car, it prints out the paper copy to give to the violator. But when the officer clears, that copy's automatically transported, transmitted to the court clerk and to our records office and filed into our records management system as well as theirs, which means that they can spend more time doing other things, because the amount of paperwork we generate is horrendous. I think it'd be a valuable tool. It would save the city money as far as budget goes, with us having to try to budget for, to pay people to file these tickets and file these summonses. And where we had a data hack at the earlier of the year, we had to pay these records clerks overtime to go back and re-enter all of these traffic tickets from 2020 and 2021, which we're finally caught up, knock on wood. And as I said, I think it's a fair fee. The state police switched to it and talking with our general district court clerks, they are for it, to save their people time. We're looking at an initial cost, if we outfitted every car at one time, about $200 for software, $1,500 for hardware. So you're looking at 56 cars, $95,000 upfront, but we would not intend to do that. This law, since it allows us to implement the program, we could bank this money so long with the treasurer's office, have it issue it out. We would want to implement five or six at a time, because hardware, electronics has bugs in it. We work them out, and then we move on to the next five. So as we pay for these, we're constantly still collecting that fee, and it's a rotating thing. And they do tear up, they will wear out, we have to buy the heat paper for the printers on them. I've tried to cover it best I can, but any questions on it?
Just a couple of questions. Is this, in the ordinance, it mentions a section of code, is this fairly new, something that the General Assembly recently passed, or has this been around for a while?
The copy I have of the state code, it looks like it first originated in 2014. So it's been out, Washington County's been doing it for quite some time now. And the state police has had a pilot program where they've had to outfit like 5,000 cars. But nearly every agency I know of around here has adopted that and started using it just because of the safety factor and the amount of money that it does save. Accuracy, it cuts down on a chance of error, because when you're handling paper and writing and losing, you can lose things, some things just don't make it to court. So it's beginning widespread. And going the way most things do, maybe not in my, what time I have left in my career, but it's probably going to be maintained at one time or another that we'd be on board with it anyway.
Well, you answered my next question, which was, are, how many other localities had adopted it? And it sounds like it's.
I do not know personally of one around us that's not using it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Milligan. We appreciate you. We're looking for a motion and a second from the council to have the first reading of the ordinance. Yes, by caption only.
I make a motion for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
A second.
We have a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Mr. Hartley. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
Now we'll have the reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 21 hyphen 6, an ordinance to add Section 26, 26 hyphen 5 to the city code pertaining to an assessment of costs for an electronic summon system in the City of Bristol, Virginia.
Thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Mr. Hartley. Is there any further council discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
Now we'll have the reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 21 hyphen 6, an ordinance to add Section 26, 26 hyphen 5 to the city code pertaining to an assessment of costs for an electronic summon system in the City of Bristol, Virginia.
Thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Osborne, a second from Mr. Hartley. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
That's the last item on our agenda. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.[1743.63]